I know. I know. All right. It is now six o'clock. We will start this meeting, we on record? I call this meeting to order of the Syracuse City Business Meeting. Tonight, we will begin with an invocation. Brett, can I ask you to do that? And then we'll begin with a pledge. Paul, would you lead us in that?
Our Father in Heaven, it's with gratitude that we gather together this evening and work together to do the business of the city. We're grateful that we have our city and the good people who are here. We ask thee to please provide blessings that are needed. We ask thee to please bless us tonight with wisdom and discernment as we try to work together to reach the best results. We are grateful again for all that we have included in the name of Jesus Christ.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our first item of business is public comment. This is a chance for our citizens to bring to our attention something that may not be on the agenda that you'd like us to discuss. We do have three public hearings. If your comments are regarding one of those, you may want to wait till the item is brought forward. That would be items 10, 11, and 12. Other than that, is there anyone here that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. The next item of business is meeting minutes. We have minutes from January 14th and January 28th to approve. Counselor, are there any changes or amendments to that? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mayor, I propose that we accept the minutes of January 14th and January 28th as written.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next item is our consent agenda. We have four items on the consent agenda. Proposed Resolution R 25-06, appointing the mayor and city council to various committee positions and assignments. Item B is ordinance, a proposed ordinance 25-01, correcting misreferences throughout the Syracuse Municipal Code. That's just titles mostly to make sure we have a unified code. Item C is Proposed Resolution R 25-07, amending the Syracuse City Wage Scale for the Fiscal Year 2425. And item D is Proposed Ordinance 25-05 or 02, amending Title IV of the Syracuse Municipal Code related to housing waste recycling and green waste recycling. Okay, are there any of those that you'd like to remove for discussion?
Can we pull out item A just to briefly touch on one thing that I might think might be?
I would agree to do that. We will pull off item A. Can I get any others discussed or should we just vote on B, C, and D?
Let's go ahead. I motion that we accept items B, C, and D from the consent agenda.
Second.
Item A, or motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Let's immediately go to item A for discussion, Jordan.
So the only item I would change is, one of the things we didn't look at in the meeting last, or two weeks ago now, was the positions of mayor, pro tem, assistant, et cetera. I've been mayor pro tem for a few years now, and I think it'd probably be good to give others, someone else a chance. Would you be opposed if I, I think Paul is the second?
Correct.
Would you be opposed if I just swap us places?
I am friendly to that amendment.
Paul, you accept?
I would be fine with that.
There any objections otherwise? Okay, so I'll take a motion on item A with that one adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
That we accept.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, Proposed Resolution R 25-08 pertaining to, or appointing Peter Anderson to the Syracuse City Planning Commission. I will say really quickly that I interviewed several really good candidates, and this is awesome. I will tell you what distinguished Peter above the others that I was impressed with is that he's worked on several projects here in the city that don't conflict, but in particular did some work on the West Davis Corridor, which I think is one of the things we're discussing now is how we adjust to that. So I think his influence on the commission would be very valuable. Any discussion other than that? If not, I'll accept a recommendation to appoint Peter to the planning commission.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome, Peter. He's in the audience. Item number six, authorized administration to award the 2025 utility project contract to AAA Excavation. Is there any discussion on this item? Or do we need a preface from Public Works?
It was in the packet. I was, I'm always impressed by the spread of bids that we receive. But I'm assuming we believe they can do the work, so there's no reason not to to move forward.
I have not seen any of these names before. So it's nice to see new companies reaching out and putting in for bids and not the same old ones every time. It gives more people a shot to get some city work.
We have not worked with AAA before. I have done some reference checks and they do good work. The only complaints I've received is keeping on schedule. So that's something we'll spend a little more time with them throughout the process to be sure they can stay on schedule. So, but yeah, other than that, they do good work from what I've heard.
Any other question? Not, I'll take a motion.
I propose, I move, we accept proposed, I move that we accept to authorize administration to award the 2025 utility project contract to AAA Excavation Inc.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, Proposed Ordinance R 25-03, amending the Syracuse City zoning map for 13.75 acres of real property located approximately 3100 South, 2300 West, from residential R1 to planned residential development PRD. Applicant is Woods Cross Properties. Noah? We've talked about this great, is there anything new we should?
Yeah.
There, nothing has changed since last time we spoke about this.
Except my opinion.
Okay.
So I don't know why I went back through and looked at this again, but I did. The fencing I have a huge problem with and I'm not willing to prove based on what it is. It says that Woodside will fence the east and west boundaries of the residential lots within the developer property with a six-foot wide vinyl fencing. If the city desires a six-foot concrete precast fence on the west side of the residential property, the city will reimburse Woodside for the cost of the increase of the vinyl to precast. Now, the west side of their property is against Public Works. And although it is on the map as civil or municipal or civil, what is it on there? Civic, that's what it's on there as. It's very clearly an industrial property. They've already, Public Works has already replaced most of their fencing with precasts to accommodate the housing around there. So I feel like they need to put in what they already have around there because it is industrial. And what's required on our fencing is if single family is going around industrial, it's I and it's a precast six-foot fence. And I don't think the taxpayers should have to pay the difference for that.
I think that's a good point to bring up. I will note that I think one of the reasons why this may have been stated that way is we're getting some free land. We are getting land that we didn't previously have between the houses and Public Works for the use of Public Works as a part of this deal.
I, I feel like it still puts it around. So it was that the deal that was made with them that?
Well, there's no deal in particular that addresses.
Okay, so yeah, I feel like this needs addressing because in, in our code, it says that around industrial, but just because it's cited as it's owned by the city, it's still very clearly an industrial property.
I, I agree with that, but what is it actually zoned? The hard part is.
Civic.
Is.
Well, today it's R1.
It's R1. That's the problem is if it were zone industrial, I think that proposal would.
For, for the city?
The.
Property is?
This has been R1 and the land trade puts it in our city and we're depend, or we're planning to use it for industrial.
But what I'm saying is what is, what is Public Works currently already zoned?
That's the question.
Is it industrial or?
It's not zoned industrial. I believe it's R1, but
Because on the map it shows.
The general plan map shows it as civic, yes.
Yeah, that's, and what's on here, yeah, it shows it as civic, but all of, because it's a city property.
And I agree that it's quote unquote, obviously industrial. But the letter of the law says unless it is zoned industrial, they have no obligation. I, I agree, but I think that could be easily changed.
The problem with it is, is that we've had a lot of issues over the last two years of people, residents complaining about the sounds where it comes to loading snow removal equipment and things like that. That is literally where we do it at. So I, we're setting those residents that are going to be moving into those houses up for failure if we don't.
I, I agree that no matter what happens, it should be concrete.
Yeah. Okay.
So I think we're in accordance with that. And so they would have to pay the delta to upgrade from six-foot vinyl to eight-foot concrete.
So that's saying the city?
The city would have.
Have to pay them. Okay.
But, but again, I don't think we could tell them to build precast concrete simply because it's not actually zoned industrial. So the ordinance doesn't apply, even though it is obviously industrial.
I, I do think there is one unknown here, and that is how we choose to use that added property because at present, I believe part of it will be detention basin that is shared between the two locate, between us and them to free up the existing water retention area. So in that case, the concrete fence that's already around the trucks and things is, is still in place. I don't think, I, I mean, this is just one thought. I am not suggesting that this is not something that we should consider. I'm just saying that that's, we don't know what we're going to use the added space for today.
But added space doesn't block too much sound where it comes to disturbing people's sleep at three in the morning.
Okay. That's a good point and.
There's no sound barrier. That six-foot vinyl isn't going to block the sound of our equipment loading salt.
What's the, the alternative is a six-foot precast?
Yeah.
I don't know how much that's gonna.
That's what I'm saying. That's a huge cost to us.
Well, it seems like on the other side.
Right.
That's our side of the fence. And sometimes your neighbors don't want to fund.
Well, they're, they're.
And, and, and it's our responsibility to be a good neighbor too. It's our side of the fence.
But there's nothing there currently. So they're putting houses in there. So now it's their side of the fence and their responsibility.
It's theirs and ours. Correct?
It, it will be a border.
It will be a border. And so sometimes your neighbor doesn't want to fund when you say, can you split the cost of the fence, for instance, with me? And so for us to be a good neighbor, you know, we're going to need to put in that fence, the cement.
Perhaps I could add some context.
Yes, please.
So in, in the buffer ordinance, it does go by, by use, not necessarily zone. So a strict interpretation of the ordinance would require a concrete fence between those two differing uses. You're not wrong.
Because industrial does say what it, it explains what it is.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so that is accurate. It is required to have a fence between two different.
Okay, that's what I interpreted it as.
And of course, we, we don't want to give away anything where taxpayer dollars are being used. And so as far as context, the development agreement does specify that, that we will pay for that upgrade. That's also what we've done with Woodside in the past to upgrade from a six-foot to an eight-foot fence. Because that's even taller than what the ordinance would require. The ordinance would require a six, I believe.
Yes.
And so, and in the context of things, the city is trading land fewer acres that we're giving away in exchange for more acres. So it's not necessarily free land, but it is. It's all in the development agreement of what the exchange is. And so part of, part of this is, does include a development agreement along with the rezone. And so there's, that was taken into account, the value of the land that the city is exchanging for what we're getting. There's also some storm drain improvements that will be made on Public Works land that we will be paying for. And so that, or assisting, so it, it, it all comes into the equation of, of a trade. So it is, you're right, it is required by ordinance to have that buffer, but the value of that fence upgrade was factored into the value of the land. And the reason why we're agreeing to pay the increase because that is what we, the way we had done it with Woodside previously.
So I, I understand going up to an eight-foot fence, I, from a six-foot, because we require a six-foot. And if we were like, hey, if you got, we would like an eight-foot, so we'll pay the difference in the two between a six-foot and an eight-foot. I just feel like that's a hu, a huge cost, but if it was factored into.
I think what Noah's pointing out is that the net gain of the value of the land.
I, I understood that part.
Exceeds the defense.
I under, I'm.
So counsel?
So should that say in there instead of if the city wants that, that that's what they need to put in? And the city will, because I don't, I don't want a six-foot vinyl fence going in that's just going to have to be ripped out and a concrete fence going in because nobody checked. It's a waste of money.
That's a good point. I think we plan on putting the concrete fence up regardless. So either way, that.
I'd rather not waste the resources on the environment, though.
I, I don't think they're planning on putting up a vinyl fence. I mean, I, I think that the city plans on upgrading to the concrete fence.
Are they just going to write us a check for that value? How does that work?
Yeah, maybe Robert can explain how it worked last time with what's, with, with Woodside. I, I believe that the money that Woodside would have spent was sent to the city. And so we hired the contractor and then Woodside sent us the value of what they would have spent. So I think that's the same as that.
I acknowledge.
He's nodding, so I, I think, sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but.
I do it all the time, sorry about it.
In my opinion, if this was factored in as part of the negotiation of the trade deal, then for us to yank it at the very last minute, I don't think we should do that if we've really considered the value.
I agree, I agree, but I, I also feel like we, it should be a little more specific that there is in fact a, a concrete fence going in. That way it doesn't leave room for interpretation for someone who was out there that wasn't in the the meeting and said, that's what the development says, that's what we're doing. It just seems like a whole lot of waste of money if something just happens by accident.
I think we could solve this with a motion to approve making the concrete fence the only option, or you know, that that will happen.
I agree. So anybody else, or can I just go ahead?
Go ahead.
All right, I move that we approve Proposed Ordinance 25-03, amending the Syracuse City zoning map for 13.75 acres of real property located at approximately 3100 South, 2300 West, R1 to planned residential development PRD with the exception of the fencing being concrete.
Hey. Do I have a second?
Clear enough? Because with, with the exception of the wall has to be concrete.
Yeah.
There's no other option.
Yeah, that has to be concrete and.
I, I see Colin making notes here. I think he'll, he'll make it work.
Okay.
Adjusted.
He speaks Jen, it's fine.
Okay.
It is done.
Okay. Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight, Proposed Ordinance 25-04, amending the Syracuse City zoning map for 1.41 acres of real property located approximately 2695 West, 1700 South, residential R1 to professional office. Applicant Jonathan Galbraith. So we've talked about this one at great depth. If this is you know, a project that we at least in, in previous said that this makes sense as professional office. Does anybody have any further discussion or comments?
I like how their fencing was spot on.
Okay. All right, I'll take a motion then.
Will that we approve ordinance 25-04?
Go ahead.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's a. Item number nine, Proposed Ordinance 25-05, amending the Syracuse City zoning map for approximately 7.05 acres of real property located approximately 1185 South, 3000 West, agriculture A1 to residential R2. Applicant is Jacob Jones.
Just for clarity, it's 0.705.
Did I say? Okay, zero, for clarification, zero point, or 0.705 acres.
That whole thing is surrounded in vinyl fence, so you can't see anything currently. So driving past it, you can't really figure out like, I know since, since before they put that vinyl fence in, that there is a basin right there. But it, it feels like this is rezoning for something that's already like fenced in partially around the side. And this is very, this, I get it, but it's very weird.
I, I'm fine with this.
It is weird.
It's very.
I mean, yeah. It, it borders R2, they're going to make it R2 and they're going to make the law.
Yeah.
Because this is the one that they, they're doing commercial and that, there's no way to make that work.
It's so.
So if they can get a couple of houses on there.
Yeah. I, I, I just want to see when it's done, see how it turned out.
I motion that we approve Proposed Ordinance 25-05.
Do I have a second? Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 10 is the first of our public hearings, but first let's point out it is Proposed Ordinance 25-05, amending the Syracuse City Municipal Title 10, Chapter 30, pertaining to buffer yards. Noah, do you want to give us a preview of what this is since we do have a public hearing?
Sure. This would pertain to the required fencing between new development and the West Davis Corridor. Currently, there is no standard. This way, we would unify what the fencing would look like. It'd be a stone patterned concrete fence all the way up and down. And we think that that will protect the property owners from freeway stuff and, you know, protect property values and health, safety, welfare.
Okay. So I'm going to open public hearing. This is a chance for anybody who would like to weigh in and let counsel know how you feel before we take an action on this item. Is there anyone from the public that would like to talk about our new buffer from what we didn't have, which was a freeway zone and current properties? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any discussion or can we get a motion?
I just want to say, I feel like very clearly that good fences make for good neighbors to include between our citizens and you dot. So this is.
I move we, we accept Proposed Ordinance 25-06.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is also a public hearing. Proposed Ordinance 25-07, amending the Syracuse Municipal Code subsection 10.28.120G relating to pedestrian access walkways in commercial developments. This is very specific, again, related to the highway. So Noah, do you want to give us a really quick version of what we're going to talk about?
Yes, we wanted to make sure that our commercial developments are really safe for pedestrians, especially when they're passing through a parking lot. And so we do have a standard where it's required to provide a pedestrian walkway from where the road is to the front door of the, of the business. And this just clarifies what that walkway is to look like when it's in a parking lot.
Okay. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to talk about pedestrian crossings in commercial developments? Seeing none, I will close public hearing, counsel.
I really like this one. It's good. Even if the paint isn't refreshed regularly, it is still very obvious where they should be crossing.
I mean, look at Smith's. That's perfect right in their parking lot, same kind of. You know where it's at.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve Proposed Ordinance 25-07.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is the last of our public hearings. This is Proposed Ordinance 25-08, amending Syracuse Municipal Code Title 10, Chapter 20, establishing, establishing general land use application requirements. This is basically, this is the one to make sure that we only deal with one at a time, which is very important because it's hard to have conflicting applications and not have somebody cry foul. So I will open public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to talk about? Paul?
This proposal went to the planning commission. I had previously proposed that we exempt land use applications that require multi-stage approvals. The planning commission correctly noted that sometimes our land use applications require concurrent approvals. So there's a slight change between what you saw before and what you have before you. And that is that the current proposal would exempt both concurrent approvals and multi-stage approvals when those are required by our code.
So I'm going to, I'm going to discuss this because when I was at planning commission and I heard them discuss that, I felt like that didn't apply at all to the purpose of this ordinance, which was to have multiple applicants. This is, in that case, it would be multiple applications from the same applicant, which I think would be acceptable because that we can have concurrent applications for the same development. What we're trying to avoid is having conflicting applications of what to do with a property because then you pit them against each other in a public state, which is really undesirable to try and, you know, we already have the commitment that you have to be a landowner or under contract. So it's really kind of odd that you'd have conflicting applicants. So.
I think the subsection covers that.
I feel like so say like Woodside Homes can put in a few different things for applications in that one property, but Woodside Homes and Castle Homes can't put in an application on the same property.
That's what we're trying to avoid. Is that clear, do you feel in the language?
I'm not, I'm not certain that that's entirely clear, but I think, and I'll defer to Noah. There are times, and I'm thinking it's the PRD zone that requires an application for a zone change and an application for a site plan approval at the same time. And I think that's what the planning commission was trying to address, I think.
But are those from the same applicant?
Yeah, and I think our intention was never to prevent that. Our intention was that that would always go forward because that specific application requires multiple phases at once. We're trying to prevent multiple applicants.
Like an application war.
Do you have a suggested amendment to make that clear?
No application wars.
Should we just write that in?
If you would consider mayor going on to other matters, I'll try to fix it here and come back to it if you would.
All right, we'll come back to that when we will also delay the public hearing in that matter. Item number 13 is Proposed Ordinance R 25-09, amending Syracuse Municipal Code Title 5, Chapter 30. amending, uh, Syracuse Municipal Code Title Five, Chapter Thirty pertaining to door to door solicitation. Uh, I will say that this one was motivated a lot by call ins of people who were concerned that we don't have any language to deal with, uh, door to door solicitation. So this was an attempt to resolve that. Uh, who's handling? Is there any discussion on this or?
It's me and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I think this was just an update to what we already passed, right? This is just clarifying language.
That's correct.
Asking them if they have checked in with the city gets rid of solicitors so fast.
Hey? So is there anybody who has any questions on this?
No.
I'll take a motion then.
I move that we accept proposed ordinance twenty five dash zero nine.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, that motion passes unanimous. The next item is proposed resolution R twenty five dash oh nine. Wait a minute, we already had an R twenty five dash oh nine. Uh, Cassie, can you help me with that? It was an ordinance twenty five oh nine and now we have a.
The thirteen or fourteen.
We had R twenty five oh.
Yeah, that should be okay.
All right. So this is a resolution adopting updated city mission and vision statements to provide unified direction for municipal operations. We have discussed this in multiple meetings. Is there anybody who has any further comment on this from the council before we adopt?
Thank you for putting in a public safety.
Nope, that is good.
That was it.
Okay.
I like seeing that.
I will take a res- or proposal.
I move that we accept resolution R twenty five dash oh nine adopting the updated city mission and vision statements.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. And just by way of update, in our, uh, next work session, we will be talking about how we measure these statements and, uh, expect to spend a little bit of time on that. I'm, I'm excited for what staff's working on. Colin, can we come back to our, our?
Yes.
Item twelve. Go ahead.
Let me pitch this to you. Um, if you'll take a look at paragraph M one, I would propose to put a couple of words changes in there. No conflicting land use application will be accepted while a previously filed land use application for the same parcel or address is pending. For purposes of this subsection, an application is pending if it is under review by a land use authority, the city council or the judiciary. And with that insertion of the word conflicting in paragraph one, I think we can delete paragraph two entirely.
I like that. Good job.
Saving ink.
Lawyer vernacular.
All right. Does anybody have an issue with that? Nope. Uh, can I get a motion? Cause, oh, wait a minute. It's a public hearing. Uh, so I will now open that to public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on, uh, the idea of not having conflicting applications? Seeing none, I will close public hearing and now I will take a motion.
I move we accept proposed ordinance R, oh, sorry, not R, ordinance twenty five dash zero eight. Uh, adding the word conflicting to section one as outlined by Colin.
And striking.
And striking section.
The second paragraph.
Second paragraph.
All right.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
To start that considering you almost started it three times.
All right. So now we are to our second public comment period. This would be a chance for anyone to come forward and bring to our attention something you might like to see on a future agenda or something that you'd like to comment on. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment? Come forward, please. We'll ask you to state your name and your place of address to this mic.
Send the mic backwards.
Chief, don't arrest me. Hi, I'm Dave Ackman. Live at twenty six oh eight west, seventeen seventy south. Uh, we're at the very end of when the West Davis corridor was being done and, and being constructed and also where the frontage road is at. There's been several issues with, uh, the weeds growing higher than what I am over six feet. And the properties have been bought by U dot. Uh, no one is getting in touch with those owners. I did get in touch with one owner and asked if I could mow that property so it could be maintained. We're getting a lot of rodents, wild animals moving into the residential areas becoming a health issue. The second is the land that is right behind us between the four or five houses that are right there in frontage road. There, it's about thirty to forty feet. It's all dead spaced. The city's supposed to, either the city or U dot is supposed to go and mow that. But they're not doing it. No one's doing it. And I came in and talked to city employees just this last week and said, I'm going to go behind my house and mow in between that area. It doesn't seem right to me that a citizen in Syracuse has to take care of either state owned property or city owned property or other person's property to ensure that they're within code of the weeds and the upkeep of land.
Okay.
And if the, when I talked, no one knows if U dot has turned over the land to the city yet that's behind us. And can't tell me what's going on because I don't know if there's a feud, but you, uh, the city will talk about how U dot has mowed it and I've, we've lived there since two thousand four. And U dot's never come by and mowed anything. And the cities come by once, but they're mowing across the other side between Antelope and frontage road. There are fire hydrants that are up there that are not visible because the weeds were so tall. You didn't even know they were there.
Okay.
So something needs to be done. Either the maintenance needs to be done, or if the city doesn't want to take care of the land, maybe turn it over to those couple of residents that are there. We can increase our property size and alleviate the cost from the city to take care of it and maintain it.
Just for your, uh, we can't comment on a subject that's not on our agenda.
Right.
But I can defer you to, uh, immediately following this meeting. We have city officials who would be happy to talk to you about this and we can talk to you about it after. I can't make an agenda item out of it. Sorry.
I understand. It's just.
Thank you for bringing it forward.
Trying to find the right people that will answer phones too.
So, no, I, I appreciate bringing it forward, but.
Thank you.
I just rules for the state don't allow us to make it an agenda discussion.
Okay.
That's good information.
Conveniently, all the right people are here.
Yes, they are. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, I will close public comment. And I think this month we start down at your end, Jen with mayor and his council announcements.
I shockingly don't have anything except for sorry for putting you on the spot once again, Mr. Robert.
Jordan.
Uh, also I have uh, nothing specific.
Wonderful. Paul.
No, I have anything.
I don't have anything.
Okay. And nor do I. So we will finish with that.
Oh.
And I will take a motion.
Mayor, did, oh, did you want to?
Thank you.
About, talk about the bills?
Yes. Uh, I told Brody to remind me because I knew I was going to forget. Um, there have been some fast movement at the state with regarding bills. Uh, Brody and I were in a meeting yesterday. Um, there were shockingly some very, uh, uh, some things that do deal with us quite a bit. And so I've asked Brody to prepare an update on some of the bills that we are seeing. Um, because you do need to be aware, we won't be able to discuss this. It's not an agenda item. But we have a provision to allow us to, to update legislation that's actively happening. Brody.
Yeah. In your, in your box, in your team's box, I've, I've, uh, posted a, a word document with some selected bills that you may find of interest to, to follow. And uh, if there's anything, any action that we need to take, um, that you feel like we need to take, uh, let's talk about it. And, um, these bills are moving. Some of them, some of them are just held up in committee and may never get out, but, um, we're watching them anyway to see if they move. Uh, so in that document, you can see the current status of the bill and also the current position the League of Cities and Towns has has taken on each of these. Um, that, those things can change, but, um, if any of these need action or you feel like we need to talk to our legislator about, let us know.
Uh, I will use my mayor's minute just to bring up some of the ones that were hot topics the other day for you to pay attention to. There is one trying to eliminate garages from properties or the, or our ability to require garages. There is one that deals with, uh, parking that feels like the requirement for parking is burdenous to create or to the price of a property, which I think not having parking is we've found to be a greater burden. Um, so those are quite concerning because they seem to have some motion right now that are active. So I would encourage you all to take a look at that. Um, there is one that discourages development agreements. Uh, I think that that also is concerning as well because development agreements are a tool that has been very useful to the city. So.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What happened to four thirty three?
Uh.
Which one was that?
Agriculture, agro tourism. Uh, building codes.
Yeah. Um, I can look up the status real quick to see if, what happened today, but it's still there. Yeah. If you want us to monitor that, when we can.
Okay. All right.
There's, there's, sorry, there, there's probably like a, actually a hundred to, to monitor, but if, what I want to focus on is, uh, everything that we can, we can actually work on.
Our ability to cover.
Stop fighting between farmers and Noah.
Well, I, I think in particular, the ones that deal with building code is concerning because um, we're, there are necessidal, ness- necessities to a home.
Concerning agriculture is what it was though.
Okay. Without further ado, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.